We're gonna call the meeting to order, it's uh six thirty five. And um the first thing we're going to do is ask if anyone has public comment they'd like to make. If so, identify yourself and give us your uh address. Anyone here in the room wanna have any public comment? And if not, we can ask people that are participating online. If you, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand. I can't read that. Okay.
Any comments from people online?
Looks like no.
You must be just trying to connect. Okay, if there's no public comments, we'll go on to item. Great, well, we're making good time. This is uh your message?
O P M requires the the town file information with them, uh all of our financial information. I have, uh we have to submit our annual budgets, our auditor requests, our audits. And our municipal spending cap, because there is a grant that all towns receive from the state. From municipal spending share. And if you do not submit a municipal spending cap. Information tile completion, whatever. Terminology the state is using, using. You do not get that money. And. Either the C E O or the C F O can submit and certify that data. At the current time, there are two individuals that have access to that portal with the state. For the town of Bethany, myself being one as the secondary individual. So I cannot certify anything, only the primary user can certify the data that is input. And at the current time, that happens to be Paula. I have received the form from the state to change. The primary contact from Paula to myself, I'm assuming that that would be acceptable with. This ba- with this board, um but they will not accept it without the C E O's signature. And since we do not have a C E O. They would accept. A signature or two signatures from the other members of the board of selectmen. But they're also asking that it be documented in official me- meeting minutes. That you are authorizing this, that you're authorizing me to be moved as primary and you were signing it as the C E Os.
And uh certainly makes sense to do that.
Uh yes. Well, it's 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 the municipal spending share. Yeah, that's, I mean, they. Everything, our budget has been certified and approved by O P M for. Twenty six, twenty seven, for, you know, twenty five, twenty six, next year's budget has been certified, it has been approved by O P M. Our auditors for fiscal year twenty five have been approved by O P M, the only thing that is not approved. Is the spending cap, because you have to submit all the other information and they have to sign off on it before you can submit the spending cap information.
You submitted this form, I think, and then they rejected it, right?
Yeah, they rejected it.
I I just, I think it would be just better for in the future for decisions like that to come here first before you send documents to. Outside parties, you know what I mean? Because they um um, you know, it looks like. You know, um, they. Because the document itself, I think, requires a signature and. I just, I'm just kind of wondering why you went ahead and submitted that document without.
Because the spending cap is due by June thirtieth. And I had been in communication with a member of the O P M staff. And she said that we may have to submit, she said. I can, she goes, I can't cert- she goes, I can't approve this spending cap until it is certified. She said, and I'm going to try to work with the other, because there's two branches up there, she goes to try to work with them to find out what needs to happen. She goes, you may have to submit a change of primary user letter. And I'm like, so I submitted it along with Paula's resignation letter because it had her signature on. As the stating that she had resigned as the C E O, and I just thought perhaps maybe that would be sufficient. For them to allow me to transition over to the primary user, but that was not acceptable to them. In the, but.
By the form that they probably would reject it.
They've accepted other things with, without signatures in the past, so that's, I mean. But it's not a problem to come to this board for approval in the future. Well, I, I had submitted everything and I was unaware that it was not certified by her. I was not aware that it was not certified. Because it was entered prior to her departure.
And when is this due?
But if we have everything in process to have it switched over by the thirtieth, we will be fine. Because they are aware that there is an issue. And I have spoken with Christine since the e- since the um voicemail that I had forwarded to you. And she said, we understand that you're without someone at the moment, she said. We will accept the change when we get the documentation.
So how much um?
It's, it depends on which way they grants are um structured and labeled. By O P M, because they changed the terminology on them, it's anywhere from twenty seven thousand to sixty thousand dollars. Well, it's, it's. They reclassified, we get one grant that is sixty, about sixty seven thousand dollars, and we get one that's about twenty six thousand dollars. And the question depends, the question comes under, what are they labeling it on any given year? It's, it's. It's the municipal revenue share. And it, all it is, is it's excess. Sales tax revenue and you get it only if there is excess sales tax revenue. It could be different every year, yes. It is what it is. Correct, it is Bethany's piece of. I, yeah, I I do, I do not know, uh. She did not, I mean, Christine at the state did not tell me what the standard practices with other towns. She just said that it can be certified by either the first selectman or the C E O. The C E O or the C F O, the first selectman or the finance director.
So is it, it's the portal, do you know if it's the way it's set up, it can only be one, one person?
Only one primary, the primary user is the only one that can certify. I. That's how it's been working since I. Got here. And I don't know how it worked prior to.
We can't hear Gina or Bob, we can't hear anything that they're saying online, thank you.
Can you hear Leslie?
Yeah, we can hear her just fine, and we were able to hear you, what you just said.
It must be that's the microphone and it's too far.
Maybe we just could like.
We can hear you guys now, thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, it must, it must be. Yeah, it needs a certain amount of volume.
Maybe, yeah. Okay, thanks, thank you for letting us know, and please reach out again if, if you can't hear us.
I'm trying to motion.
You know, wait, let me see, what is it called, it's the municipal. So um we're gonna, um. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to have Leslie appointed to be the primary user to certify. Uh the town of Bethany's finances for the state of Connecticut um for the municipal revenue share grant.
Okay, in the, in the fiscal health monitoring system?
Sure, yes, yes, fiscal monitoring, so we'll add that to the motion, please, thank you.
I'll second your motion.
You wanna vote?
I guess we have to, all in favor? Aye. Do you have a stand? Pretty easy. Okay, um, do you wanna sign first or should I?
Oh, what, second, it's, it's fine.
Should I date it, submit the twenty? Yep, the whole computer system can't work until it's got pen and ink signatures.
No figure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for bringing that to our attention. And um, you you got the email, we're trying to put together a agenda.
Yes.
So if there's anything in particular you know of, let us know.
I will have something. I will get that off to you tomorrow morning.
It is a regular meeting, so if we had to, we could add something to the agenda, but it's always best if we know about it to to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, um, we're at the. Grant. The ad hoc grant group is meeting on Monday night, so we will have a proposal for the board of selectmen on, for the meeting on Tuesday. So, we would like to have grants on the agenda.
Shall we put on the agenda for Tuesday, um, the. Just an update maybe to, to the board on um on town finances or anything with the board of finance or any, um.
Get an update.
Yeah, we usually have you under grant updates, but maybe a more general finance.
Okay, I can do that, thank you. Do you wanna get the agenda out tomorrow?
Um, tomorrow is Friday, right?
We can do it, we can do that, we can do that.
Yeah, I brought, I brought like a, we'll probably start with last month's and just edit it.
Yep. I guess we should go on to. Number four.
Panel four. Selection of interim first selectman, pursuant to general statute nine dash two twenty two. There may be an executive session uh under general statutes one dash two hundred six A. Hopefully they can hear that online. Um, do you have anything you wanna say in public, do you wanna have an executive session? Public stuff we should probably do first.
Yeah. I guess, you know, I, I'm not sure if you have anything to report to me in executive session, I'm just. Wanna say that um, it's disappointing that we haven't um been able to, you know, make progress. In all this time. I, I do think that, you know, I came to the table on this with an open mind. And um, you know, very much willing to consider your candidate um or candidates. And you presented a good candidate who we interviewed at length, um and it, I think it was a good interview. Um, and um grateful that he um, that he is willing to do. The interim position, um, you know, I think that based on what we heard from the two candidates. I um strongly believe that Carol Goldberg is a stronger candidate and has a broader skill set. Um, and I think it's really important that, you know, given what the town has been through, I think it's really important to. Not only identify the best candidate, but to move forward with that appointment, and so um. You know, I, I just, you know, we, we could have really have appointed her last week or the week before. And I just, um, you know, I mean, I don't know what we'll, what we'll say to each other in executive session, but. Where where things stand right now, I do wanna say publicly that, you know, if our choices are Carol Goldberg. Or s- uh Sal Amadeo, I am gonna vote for Carol. I think she's, again, the best candidate, um, and I think that there was some public comment at the last meeting about. The fact that she, knowing what has happened in town and knowing people that work in town hall was somehow um a weakness. That, that doesn't make sense to me, it really doesn't, and um, I think that um it's a strength, you know, and. You know, um, I think that she'll be able to more quickly assess what's going on in town, report to us. And I think that that sort of thing will help us move forward. Um, not only that, but she's without a doubt better able to identify issues that could get us in trouble. And I think that that bit, that piece is really important to me, and um, you know. Um, you know, we had part of the reason why our, you know. A- actually, I'm probably not gonna say that, because the executive session is executive session, but um, um, what I will say is that. Because Carol knows um it, a lot of detail about what this town has gone through. And knows how the town hall works and, and knows the employees. Um, we won't have like a, a learning curve that we would have to see with most other candidates. Um, and the, I guess the last thing I'll say in support of Carol is that she, um, and I'll admit to my um. Disappointment, Carol has strongly committed not to run in December, and I think that that's um. Really important, because we don't, we would have. Um, you know, someone who is in an interim position who may be using this time. To sort of, you know, work up a campaign and on, you know, on um, you know. The taxpayers' dime, and I don't, um, I, I don't think that's the best route for us to be taking right now. Um, also, you know, there was some public, public comment that sort of um. Sort of. I guess describes Sal as a person who um is, has, is disinterested. You know, not political or um, um, just removed, I guess, from the conversa- difficult conversations that we've had as a town. Um, but he is a person who ran for first selectman two times, uh, two times the town has rejected him as a candidate. As a first selectman, and um, I just don't think that we should be appointing him at this time. Um, so I do wanna just say that, a summary of, um, you know, the reasons why I think Carol. And there are others, I mean, I could go on, um, I think it's clear to anyone who's looking at the candidates in an objective way, that Carol is the stronger candidate. Um, uh, and I think that, given what we are going to see in this town without a doubt, which is the lawsuits that are coming. Um, I think it's good to have um people with legal experience at the table when these things happen. Um, and we don't know when that'll happen, I'm, you know, fairly confident we know it's going to happen, and um, the legal background that she has is. Um, something that, you know, you can't duplicate, so um. I, I think, you know, um, that's all I, I have to say for now, but. Um, do you have anything you wanna say publicly?
Sure, yeah, I think that we left the last meeting that I was gonna consult with. Um, members of the Republican Town Committee, unfortunately our meeting last week coincided, so I wasn't able to attend to. Uh, hear from the director, but I, I did talk to uh some of them. And uh also that I was going to contact the elected officials, will make the decision. Um, if we are unable to appoint someone, uh, so that they would be, start talking about. Their process, so they're not, you know, starting from zero and thirty days passes. Um, which I've done, and they, they talked about it, and they'd all be happy to not. Come into existence as their one-time ad hoc duties. Uh, yeah, I, I, I know Carol's uh, well qualified kind of candidate. Um, but by saying that Sal ran for first selectman a while ago and didn't get elected is not really relevant. Because Carol didn't run for first selectman either, so she had. You're saying he didn't get the majority of votes against an incumbent and therefore is unqualified to serve.
No, I didn't say that, I, no, I did not say he was not qualified, I've never said that, and he knows that, I told him that as well. Uh, I'm just saying, if that, my comments there are a response to people who spoke up in public comment at the last meeting. Who seemed to suggest that his um, distance from what happened in town is somehow a benefit. And, and I just, I just reject that.
He wasn't part of Paula's administration.
Carol's not a part of her res- you know, her administration either.
Um, the uh, yeah, it's, he um, was very involved in the Republican Party and in, in town government. A while ago, so I'm not, I never said he was apolitical, and I don't think anybody else said he was. He has not been part of Paula or Miss Strangel, he's kind of been. Of outside, just focused on his uh, private life and ob- obviously work. Um, so there, there's obviously benefits having people who are intimately familiar with town hall, and there's benefits having people who are not. Person counts to both. Um, so I, I did do those things, uh, probably not gonna be a super shocker to you that the uh, Republicans I spoke with felt it should be. Republican.
Not a shock, no.
No, I did not think that would. And if my daughter say, uh, it's news like fork found in the kitchen or rain is wet. Democratic candidate prefers the Democrat nominee and the Republican prefers the Republican, but hopefully we can talk about it. Uh, if you think it's helpful, we can go into executive session to discuss. Um, but if there's anything else in public, we should probably. Say that now.
Yeah, I um, I just, again, I wanna remind you that. Our very first meeting, I asked you about that, about whether you believed, I'm not talking about the Republicans, I'm talking about whether you believed. That we should appoint someone who's a Republican, because I wanted to sort of have that information upfront. So I could have some idea on whether or not we are spinning our wheels here, um, and. You, you didn't say open mind, but something to that effect, right, that you, and um, I just think that um. It, it, you're right, it's not a shock that Republicans would say that Paula's seat should be filled. By a Republican, and obviously, you know, shock, right, I disagree with that strongly, especially given. That um, the candidate that um, the Republicans. Bedded, chose, supported until the bitter end. Um, was forced to resign, and it, you know, it was a bad choice for, for Bethany. That, that was made, and um, I mean.
That, that has nothing to do with Sal or any.
No, no, has nothing to do with Sal, I'm saying that.
So you shouldn't say Paula made a mistake and therefore the punishment has to fall.
Paula didn't, isn't the only one who made a mistake, Bob, the Republicans who supported her into the, almost the last, the day of her resignation. People who supported a candidate who was clearly unfit for this town, okay, I'm not saying it's Sal's fault, obviously it's not. I'm saying that the group of people who appointed Paula to be our leader made a big mistake. And that has to be acknowledged. It has to be acknowledged, it was a mistake, uh, and you yourself, I asked you if you would support me in the statement that I, we made. Um, I asked you if you would support me in saying that, you know, she should resign. And this was well after the Pullman Conley report came out, I understand, I totally understand, I told you at the time, I understand. Um, you know, you, you support your, your team, I, I get it, um, but I feel like.
That, that.
Can I, can I finish, please? I feel like that, that to be told by the Republicans who chose Paula and put her in the seat, that. They should continue to have the power to appoint another person is wrong, I, I reject that, I think it's wrong, and the, you know, state. Statute says that we can agree on someone, and I think it would show um, really um. An act of good faith on your part, if you would agree to, to appoint someone who's very, very qualified, we're lucky she wants. To, she, she agreed when I asked her, someone who wasn't looking for this, someone who does not wanna run in, in the election in November. I, I've asked her to, I'll be honest, um, you know, and she has refused. Um, you know, I'm gonna continue to ask her. Um, but, you know, she, she refuses, and I, and you know, it's a, it's a losing battle on my end, but. Um, she is someone who would do, everyone knows that she would do a good job for this town. That she would tell us what's going on, there would be transparency, um, you know, and uh, she's exactly what we need right now. On every level.
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, uh, you'd said I wouldn't uh, sign a letter, um, an open letter calling for Paula's. But I didn't wanna say Paula should resign, I prefer to talk, tell her myself, and that's what I did too.
That's fair.
Just felt it was a better way instead of telling reporters that and hoping Paula sees it. Let's see, um. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, with Carol, I just think uh, you know, I, I understand you're saying Paula, but I don't think anybody. Knew about her judgment issues when they nominated her or renominated her. Uh, to run for that party or voted for her, because I guess the majority of people in town had poor judgment. If you're saying the Republicans are bad, then all the people voted for her.
I didn't say Republicans are bad, I didn't say that.
But you, you're saying like they should be, they should be blamed for running Paula?
I don't think they should be rewarded for choosing someone who's not qualified, she clearly is not qualified, what qualifications does she have?
Paula is no longer on the table.
I'm, you're talking about the Republicans, you just reported, you talked to the Republicans, I'm talking about that group, people who.
The state law makes five Republicans, just like right now, state law says two selectmen can make the appointment.
That's right.
If we can't do it, then five Republicans.
And, and, and if you're telling me that you refuse to vote for someone who's clearly, would be excellent for this town. I mean, unless there's anything else you wanna tell me, I don't, I mean, I think we should agree to nominate her and appoint her to be interim. And, and if your position is, I think it has to be a Republican, you're, that is exactly contradicts what you told me the first time we met.
And you're coming to a conclusion that there's only one candidate now, is you have decided the best candidate is Carol Goldberg, and you have. You're assuming I have to agree with that.
No.
Okay.
I'm asking you to agree.
Okay.
And I'm assuming there are two candidates.
Yes, so if I don't agree that she's the best candidate for the town at this time. Right, then you're saying I lied to you or? Right, then you're saying I lied to you or?
No, no. No, I asked you if you, you, you. You're telling me the Republicans reported to you that it has to be a Republican. I'm just saying that that contradicts what we talked about the first time we met.
Okay, well, let's, let's not worry about that. I, I think. For, there's pros and cons to both candidates. They're both qualified, but I think Sal would be a better candidate.
Why?
For the, to fill in for the interim.
Why?
Because he has government management experience, which Carol doesn't.
What government management experience does he have?
From uh, working for the town wall and for.
So you think a purchasing agent is managing a town?
Um, I didn't say he managed a town and.
Okay. You said he had management experience.
Yeah, he, he was a director of the purchasing department.
Okay.
So he has a significant government background.
And, and Carol has experience also man, managing people and, and, and. Well, she's done a lot here.
And what, now you're saying, you, you wanna meet, you asked me and I, so I said, why? He'd be good and plus he has not been part of anything and he will be coming in with no agenda.
Well, we spent two hours educating him on some very important issues. How much time do you have to bring someone up to par? I mean, that, that was one issue. I mean, how much time do we have? I mean, I don't, we don't have to, again, waste everybody's time. You're telling me that you think Sal is better. I'm telling you why I think Carol is better and um, you, you know, if we're not gonna get anywhere, then I think we should put an end to this.
Alright, well, do, do you have anything else you wanna do in public? I'd like to have at least a brief executive session.
Okay.
To talk about the.
I don't think I have anything else, uh, that I could say.
Alright, will we go into executive session?
Seven oh seven. Uh, second.
To discuss the appointment of a official.
Okay. So, so going, uh, into executive session seven oh seven to discuss the appointment of interim. Thank you.